No.
Because I think that if, if, if he can do nightly rentals for contractors in the winter, that's, that's great, but, you know, so, but saying no Airbnb might preclude that. But, you know, if we were able to have hydro people on the island in the winter, I wouldn't be, uh.
Well, let's stop that.
You know, like, you know, that kind of, uh, and maybe then they are, they, so they don't get into that rental thing, they're gonna have to be daily or weekly, they're not gonna be the monthly thing, so they, cause Ronnie sounds terrified of that.
Having tenants.
Yeah.
If the contract said that it was, the, the staff will have priority from, say, May until?
October.
End of October.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah, it would, we have to sort of give them some parameters.
Something about monitoring the, uh, the wastewater outfall, too.
Yeah. Well, I don't think that would be any question, I think they're just gonna get hammered on something like that.
Yeah.
It's gonna be so much by Vancouver Postle.
How would they be monitoring?
They're gonna be all over it, they'll have to do testing, you're gonna have to do testing every game.
Seattle must do it already, if these are the system, and I know that they're allowed in boats now, and it's quite an expensive system to put in, but you put it in and then you just, you don't have to go into a pump up.
And it's fail safe.
Yeah.
However, they're, they're not zero maintenance for the rest of?
No.
No, certainly not, no, I wouldn't think so, no.
They, they.
I don't think so at all, they'd be a maintenance headache.
Well, yeah, there's gonna be filtration and stuff in it.
Absolutely, and that buzzer's gonna be going off all the time, and you're just gonna be a slave to it, but if that's what they wanna do, that's their, that's their choice.
And that's great that they wanna do that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
From a Muni perspective.
I don't know why they just wouldn't put her in a pump up.
Well, because then they add twelve units to the, um, code bin, I don't.
So, do I hear a motion then to, um, add, add a condition to the, um, otherwise general support for this proposal, and that condition would be to look into a housing agreement for a six-month period that would, from May through October, where the units would be used solely by employees either of this business or of another local Boon Island business? I have a question with this, too, even if we set that up, um, there won't be any real incentive for him to provide long-term accommodation through the winter for some of his staff who might like to be there other than in the summer. He has four right now, but he, he may want to have accommodation for twelve of them all year round, and it seems to be, it'd be to his financial advantage not to provide that housing for them until he's sent out to contractors even for six months.
Absolutely.
Uh, if he's gonna make a hundred dollars a night, uh. He's gonna, he's gonna quite root for his profits on about three basis. Even if he takes a loss on, on the accommodation, if he's not charging enough to pay for the cost of, of the, at eight hundred a month, if he can turn around and make three thousand a month.
Now, and you know, things do change, I mean, if we all of a sudden had a vacancy rate on Bowen Island, which we don't have now, then the staff could be moving into a house, they could all host together or something.
But then, but then if they are, if, if there isn't a staff issue.
Yeah.
What's wrong with him renting them out?
No, but if we've got a housing agreement that says he has to house staff, and now all his staff are living in houses somewhere, cause there's all kinds of accommodation, now, now we've committed them to this.
Yeah, I don't wanna make it too narrow that it's, that it's unworkable.
Does this start to become some kind of a motel, and is he then contributing the uses of the?
So, we allow, like, in his zone allows, actually, not the water zone, but it's a planned portion, allows commercial guest accommodation, which is essentially our, like, Airbnb.
The water?
This is the water.
I know, the water zone, yeah, but, you know, so wouldn't it be, it's not a?
So, it's, it's suddenly got a floating motel? Potentially.
Yeah.
Is that, uh?
Is that okay?
Hmm?
Is that a problem?
I need to see where we allow it.
They might, maybe not.
Well, as long as he's.
As long as everybody's, everybody's got rental accommodations. I just don't wanna see it turn into an Airbnb and there's still people without housing.
Yeah, no, I don't, I agree with that.
And I know he'll look after his staff, but there's also a lot of other businesses in the boat that need it, that need accommodation, and I don't, I don't know how we prioritize the need for that.
You can't really expect Ronnie to give a discounted rate to employees of some other, some other companies, yeah, the competing restaurants.
Probably not, no.
Yeah, so it's not committed in his water zone, commercial guest accommodation.
But he's got commercial guest accommodation, all the floating party boats that come in and somebody just rents like.
Yeah.
Yeah, so he's left, he's left Bochum in, too.
I know, it's just, it's, I mean, there isn't really, there's technically a difference, but there really is no difference.
Daniel, that's an APC regulation, or what?
That's our, our zoning bylaw.
This is.
So, does that inherently preclude him from doing that, and so, but he's okay, but, okay, so just staying with the concept of use for the moment.
Yeah.
Is the use that he's proposing permitted in the water zone?
Well, I mean, so what he's proposing are buildings that don't meet, like, we allow float house, a dwelling unit.
Right.
We don't permit them to have multiple dwelling units in a float, floating structure.
Right, but we're gonna accommodate them.
But this will be.
Create a, a new definition.
Yeah.
And, and a new use.
Yeah.
But you're not actually rewriting zones, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, I would add a new accessory use to where there's floating house, I'd add, whatever I wanna call it.
Yeah, that's key.
Floating building, but you know, something like that.
Floating staff house, why don't you call it a floating staff house, and then it's written in as a staff house, or something like, um.
But that precludes them, or it could go for anybody else.
But you know, like, based on what he's asked for, it would say, you know, it's like a building containing one or two dwelling units designed to float on water for a lot, but then I don't know if it would say, like, in that definition, just that it can be used for commercial guest accommodation, or if I'd have to input that in as another accessory use, based on what he's asking for.
Yeah, floating staff house that can be used for, uh, other accommodation co, um, local contractors or something during winter months.
But really, it just becomes market accommodation, then?
Yeah, well, that's, that's right.
Right.
That's the point.
But it is, it's gonna be market, like, if, if, if the rents went to, the alternate rents were two thousand dollars a month, then he probably raises to a thou, like, you know, it's gonna, he's gonna, he's gonna charge what the market can bear, that his employees will stay, um.
At a reduced level.
Yeah.
That's what I said, that's how the system works, I mean, a hundred dollars a month is very, very expensive.
A housing agreement can, you know, put, like, different lines can put rental rates on it as well, right?
I don't know, no.
But, I mean, to a certain extent, this is gonna be less expensive than an apartment in town, because it's smaller.
I, I think, I think the, the point of this is how do we get this to council, so then council can deal with the, that our concerns are this, I think that's what we try and put in there.
Without making it too obvious, yeah.
Yeah, I, they have to have a little bit of flexibility to make a thing work.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, it's not really up to the APC to solve this issue either, I, you know, I think, but what I'm hearing is a general concern about how the units potentially will be used throughout the span of any given year.
Correct.
And that there will be a changing use, undoubtedly, and we don't know what it is, it's just one scenario, that anything could happen, so, um, I think we could, on the second point, we could come up with a motion, something like, um, that the APC, um, further to the APC's recommendation, in support of these units, we would urge council to, uh, consider ways to ensure that this, that these units are used primarily for staff working in businesses on Bowen Island.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, wait a minute, staff working in businesses on Bowen Island? Yeah.
Yeah.
So, he doesn't, he doesn't have to rent exclusively to his staff, working in his restaurant, if he wants to rent to some staff who are working in the Tuscany, why not?
Yeah.
They need somewhere to live, too.
Then he probably won't do that.
Not gonna do it even in a month when he can chip me. Well, I mean, that's, that's up to him.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, primarily.
We're not telling him what to charge, David, we're just saying, we wanna see these people housed.
The essence, the essence of the housing is for employee housing.
But isn't that again?
It's not for him to make a whole bunch of money, shed a lot of money down on the revenue.
Isn't that again getting into describing a solution, where we list our concerns, that we don't want this to be an Airbnb float town, and we don't want, you know, the other things we've been talking about.
So, it's gonna be have to.
It's up to Daniel.
Daniel, it's, it's, it's.
Do this.
And it has to be done, it has to be done before the public hearing, some kind of thing, or else everybody will swirl way more than we're swirling, and if we want this to get through, then we have to.
So, we do think that there should be some kind of housing agreement.
Housing agreement.
Everybody's agreement.
Well, we may not have the ability to have a housing agreement, although this is something Daniel was gonna.
But, but we think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
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 I, I don't see why we couldn't.
A housing agreement.
Of course, just floating housing agreement.
Yeah, maybe just, maybe just legal like that.
Right.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's a housing agreement for the, for the, I guess, yeah, it would, in it, it would be described and limited to this area, in the housing agreement, it would identify the area and where those units would be, and all that kind of stuff, but there's no reason why one couldn't have that kind of agreement, as long as the municipality is party to it.
Can I read what I, just, what I have, what I'm hearing?
Yes, please.
That the advisory planning commission recommend that staff apply a housing agreement to the development department of four-three-one trunk road, proposed floating homes that specify that, staff have priority for rentals from May to October, short-term commercial guest accommodation prioritized in the winter months, prioritize workers on Bowen Island. That's what I have.
Yeah.
That all the concerns can be listed within the housing agreement, and then Daniel will craft it in a way that suits the research that he does.
But it is not be used for short-term vacation rentals.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's really, that we're against short-term vacation rentals, but that's really all we're against, is that, is that true?
I think that's true, I mean, that's, that captures the, these, the Airbnb issues and so on.
So, if, if we, yeah, we say that we're calling it vacation rentals, that we're against vacation rentals, that might resolve the issue, because we're not against him renting to contractors, or to other people's employees, or to.
Although, I'd really like to see it focused on staff, and, and, you know, those people do need accommodation in the winter, too.
Yes.
Yeah, we wanna see the restaurants open in the winter.
Yes, yeah.
But, but if he's got empty units, we also have to let him make money off them.
Yeah, he's doing fine, I think.
I know, I'm a gentleman.
But we wanted to do far, we wanted to do better than fine.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then, so what if, did you want to include something about rates in that housing agreement?
About rates?
Restricting rental rates.
Just looking at what Daniel's asking us about.
I mean, so that was, yeah, one of the things that, like, you can restrict in a housing agreement, I don't know if that's.
I, I think that's a slippery slope, yeah, it's pretty tricky, um, yeah, because it.
Yeah, no idea.
It's difficult to know where the housing market is going, and cost of the housing market from month to month, or going from year to year.
Well, what we've done with others, right, if we end up using CMHC Metro Vancouver rates as the Bowen market, it ends up being, like, significantly higher than eight hundred a month, because it would be.
I think.
Yeah.
I think we let him do his thing.
So, it would put a cap on it, that's probably, like, I don't think he could ever reach the Vancouver.
Yeah, and he can put the rent high and the wages, uh, wages higher, or the rent low and the wages low, he can play that game with his employees, and that's his prerogative on the taxman.
So, how's that looking, Seth?
Pardon?
How's that looking?
Did that look good, so do you wanna include something about the name of the, of the, the definition within this housing agreement, or that's part of the name?
So, that would probably be in the bylaw, I have to write, this is coming from the definition for it, that's, it just captures what he wants to do.
I think, I think, you know, basically what we're trying to impress him is we're happy to have this happen, but we're cautious, but we're cautious about the housing, worried it's gonna go, that's all.
So, in our motion, do we have anything about, any general support of this idea?
Yeah, that was the first part.
Can we say if we're in support of staff accommodation, and then with the ability to rent it out in the off-season, non-Airbnb?
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right.
But I'll probably make a combined.
Yeah, I think that's where we're going, I think, so the first, the first recommendation was.
The advisory supports the proposed amendment.
Right.
To the bylaw to allow just six floating buildings containing up to twelve units.
Right.
It would work better if they were together.
Just as more in motion.
Yeah. Okay.
So, um, then add to that with the, with the recommendation.
And provide the floating property, sure.
Sure, provides, I, I think it's a, it'd be a single recommendation, that the, um, housing be, uh, regulated through a housing agreement, which considers the units to be primarily staff housing. And which, and which precludes the, the use of the units as short-term vacation rentals.
Especially between.
I think we're gonna stop here, it's a very long, it's a very long sentence.
Um, regulated by housing agreement that, that's what you say, specify?
Precludes?
No, I'm, I'm behind that, that the units are primarily staff housing.
Primarily.
And.
Prioritizes staff.
Which gives priority to Bowen Island.
Workers.
Workers, and which precludes the use.
Efficiently.
As short-term vacation rentals.
Yeah.
That's a bit redundant.
Yeah, why not just say it precludes short-term vacation rentals?
I'm not sure what it's saying, now, it's gotten to the sentence of something, I got lost halfway.
Regulated by a housing agreement that specifies that units are primarily staff housing, and precludes the use of, as short-term vacation rentals.
Sure, right, it was a bit.
I'll do the grammar, would you guys, scaring at me?
You got your suggestion, but, and don't make it too obvious.
Right. Do I have a motion?
Yep.
Bridge, seconds. David, David.
My goodness.
Um, I'll take. Okay, I'll put this three minutes.
Good.
Moving on to the second item, which is short-term vacation rentals in a dump? No.
Oh. Oh, you know, there.
So, in a, rather, in a transfer station, accommodation in a transfer station.
Will you be back to visit, Daniel, or you weren't there on our first visit, where you, before you died?
Have you ever been up there?
I've been, like, right to the.
Office?
Yeah, like, right to the entrance, and council is very definite they wanted to say visit, you know, to the city.
Solid truth.
Oh, yes. Actually, you can get a good look at it and pick that cross-island trail above it.
Above it, yeah. Okay, where? So, transfer station, so currently, there's no licensed transfer stations on Bowen Island, so transfer station is a permitted use in a couple different zones, which are both properties owned by the municipality, and there's one site on Radar Hill that allows.
What is Radar Hill?
Radar Hill, um.
That's, um.
The Maquilade?
Yeah, Maquilade, Maquilade, yeah, Twin Islands got that.
Yeah, allows a green waste compost facility, it's not a transfer station, but they allow something to, they potentially can store waste, but they don't have the Metro Vancouver license.
Does, uh, green waste include garbage from your house?
No.
Car, uh, kitchen waste?
That's called green.
It could, so they could be compost facilities, so they could operate.
So, what you're saying, well, well, he's applying for wood to be chipped up, basically, he could still.
No, he can't chip up wood there.
So, he's applying to be able to combine loads and take them off, he has a wood chipper on his site right now, not on the industrial zone.
Is it portable?
Where it sits, and what he's allowed to do with it is to take it to sites to grind them up on their site, is what he's permitted to do.
So, then he's not allowed to transport it?
He's not allowed to bring wood to his site to chip it, he's allowed to bring it to people's sites to chip it.
Yeah, so he wants to be able to do the opposite.
So, he, what he's applying for is to be able to bring loads and combine them on his site, so, if you empty, like, if you, if he's clearing a site to bring it there, to bring another load, to combine them into one load, to take them off Island.
Right.
Just a technical weird thing that he's allowed to do.
It's a transfer station, which is weird, it's gotta be all licensed to Metro, or else the business.
Is there an underlying wish to become a composting, on-island composting facility? Is that?
So, there, um, there isn't from him, that everyone talked to him, you know, it's sort of the municipality's looked at on-island compost facilities, his site comes up as like, oh, would you wanna do it, he doesn't wanna do it right now, cause he doesn't think it's profitable, essentially.
There's all kinds of ponds or leachates and stuff for the site.
Yeah, there's creeks up there.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, like, I'm not sure whether, is the tailgating before the horse, or I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah.
But the Muni was looking for sites for that, and, and, I, I guess at one point they were looking at the, the school site that, that is off of, uh, well, where the axe growing, lumberjack.
Sort of satellite public works yard right now, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, so, there's no, there's no other site that the Muni's looking at now, not at this point, not at this.
So, Muni's supporting this transfer station business, or is this?
Uh. So, in terms of, like, staff level?
I don't think there's any reaction, yeah.
Probably one of, like, the highest complaints we get are about green waste dumping, and primarily it's from different landscaping companies complaining about their rivals dumping green waste on different sites, because then, they get complained about, so then they get mad when they see other people do it, so they complain, and then.
Kind of like scuffs.
So, so in terms of, like, having the, the ability to combine and actually have a licensed facility, you know, staff support that.
Yeah.
It does sort of, with, with this property, you sort of, you know, you get nervous the more you open it and look into.
Would that be, would that be a free service you expect, I know it is in town, even though they dump green waste, they don't charge it?
I wouldn't, well, I don't know, I guess ultimately it's up to.
Actually, if he can compost it and sell the compost, should be.
Well, which is what they do in town, right?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, but, but it's the environmental issue that is concerning, uh, about, uh, you know, the storage of that, rodents, and all kinds of things that, that come along with that, and.
Yeah.
So, it's one thing, it's one thing to store it, it's another thing to take it away, you know, that's, that's the problem, if he's not taking it away, you say it's gonna be a rat haven in no time at all, you, it could be huge, it could be very problematic, but it's extraordinarily, and I haven't read through all the details, but it's very well-regulated by Metro.
By Metro, yeah.
And there's a license involved and a whole bunch of other stuff.
Maybe somebody can regulate it, then.
I doubt it.
Despite the, uh, the term, it's not really going to be a place where things, things are transferred, what he's really wanting to do is have a place where things light up and don't go away.
But can be combined.
But could be combined.
Yeah, so what, what he's specifically asking for is to combine it and remove. Yeah.
Cause right now, he's just not allowed to do that, it's just a weird technicality.
Yeah, but, he, if he can, what, where does the compost facility come, into this?
Oh, this is just compost, cause this is just saying, where, where we allow some stuff done.
But is there not a wish, is there not a wish in here to have that capability as well, or?
So, that's more comes up, um, that comes up in the staff report, in the bylaw comments about the applications, they would like to see compost facility added.
Staff would like.
Yeah, so there's a couple of uses that, especially by law feels right, that they're not, would like to see added as additional uses in terms of what he's doing already.
In order to bring the existing facility into compliance.
Yeah.
But also, then, but then he'll want money for, and then nobody will use it.
Well, things are composted there now, one way or another.
Is that an environmentally appropriate place for composting facilities, considering the creeks and it's right across the lake?
I have no idea.
Is that the right place for it?
I don't know.
Is that something that Metro?
But didn't we find out that the creeks are, are not, um, they're not real creeks when we, when we did that, that site, what, like, what, what, what we had, were concerned about, it turned out to not be a concern, is my memory.
Yeah, there was a, there was a creek running across the back that was to do with his storing.
Anyway, it turned out to not, it doesn't go, it, it's, it dries up, it's not a permanent stream or something, anyway, there were some.
Yeah, it's a terminal stream.
Terminal stream, so it wasn't an issue, which we had thought it was.
Does some of these uses wander off the industrial use property?
That's something I'm probably, I'm worried about, and almost has the next step, so like, the other things asked for is to dispose in town facility, and so wanting to see a plan that shows, okay, this is your, your industrial zone area, how are you using it with all your industrial uses, and so that you're not.
Do you, does the Muni have the availability of a superimposy or zoning map on an area?
Yes, um, our, like, our cadastro lines are often not accurate, um, and so I would have, our zoning layer is, is much cruder than that even, right, it's like somebody's taking the bylaw and signing, okay, this is where, it is, I mean, in the council report, I think it's included here, they have their survey done, it's on page, I don't know, it's right at the back.
What are you, survey?
Thirty, thirty-six is the survey, plans, that's a survey plan they had did at the time of, so this is the ortho from.
Yeah, cause.
I don't even know, and that's the time of recording when they surveyed the area to be designed.
He's got stuff going all the way up there.
Right.
Yeah, he, he really, seems to me like he needs to just change the zoning to include all that, I mean. Isn't all that illegal that's outside of this, cause that's all industrial activity.
Yeah, I mean, so the site itself gets into, part of it has a mining license over a portion of it, right, it's own rural residential, the rest of it, which does allow sort of rural uses as well as just residential, um, when he originally came, as I'm sure some people, APC can remember, he'd applied back in twenty-twelve for a, you know, comprehensive rezoning, to rezon a fair portion of the industrial five, and, and then at some point in the, I think, yeah, at some point in the process, he got shrunk back to just this, and to just allow a couple, a couple initial uses, essentially for, to allow him to subgravel out of it, um, and it never actually captured some of the stuff that he does on the site, including this, like, transfer of, of waste, or, you know.
It's sort of incomplete, or something.
Yeah.
It's like, it's sort of, I just thought of.
I wanna know where he's going with it.
Right.
So, the, the one thing here on page thirty-two, number one there, temporary storage of tree debris until it reaches such a sufficient amount to warrant shipping, is not allowed to run a chipper on that property, period.
Right.
Right.
Oh, he's not?
No, absolutely not, it's a noise finally.
Well, okay, I can tell you a story about that, so.
Well, you, were you in council about that?
Uh, no, um, my next, so, the property next door is being developed, and so they cut down a bunch of trees, and there are a bunch of stumps and crap lying around, and so I thought, okay, what are they gonna do with this, and then one day, there was an unbelievable racket, well, for about a week, there was an unbelievable racket, I went over, and there was this machine that looked like it was about fifty years old, that was grinding this stuff up, and they were just feeding the stumps in, and it was grinding it up and blowing it all over the place, and of course, smelled a lot, actually, it And they were just feeding the stumps in, and it was grinding it up and blowing it all over the place, and of course, it smelled a lot bad, actually, it was nice to smell, it was cedar. Um, and then there was an enormous pile of cedar debris and bark and crap, and I thought, okay, they're gonna burn this right here, what's gonna happen? And a few days later, it was gone, and I saw these trucks. So, instead of it being ground up there, where it's a long way from the people, it was ground up right beside my house, um, you know, for three days of astonishing, astonishing noise of the machine that looked like it might blow up any day. And then, all this stuff was then trucked off, so, it would be better if it was ground up there, and if they'd instead just thrown a few trunks and stumps in trucks, instead of having machines have to, you know, pull all the ground up stuff and try to get it out of there. So, it would have made a lot more sense to have a whole thing done up there, rather than have it done and moved in a difficult way, um, with an up-front-end motor dumping it into big trucks and stuff like that. So, I, I finally understand when, when I, when I was thinking of that, when I read this, and when I heard Daniel talk, that's what that's about. And it obviously makes sense to be able to pile it up until you can take it off the island, unless you're gonna compost it there.
Okay, so, why is he taking it off the island?
That's a good question, I mean, you can compost it, but composting facilities, there aren't many composting facilities in Metro Vancouver, and most of them have trouble. And where they really have trouble is once you start adding kitchen waste to it, because then you've got the rat problem, and the super smell problem, yeah. But even without that, like, the big one that they have in Richmond, um, used to be called Richmond Soil and Fiber, is now Harvest Power. And they've got two facilities, a closed one, uh, which generates gas as well, which is fabulous, and, and open windrows. And the windrows have to have ga- they have to, they're sucking the air in, to bring the air in, to make sure they're getting turned over enough, and all that kind of stuff, so that the...
But that's a proper compost.
It's never, it's proper composting, but even with all the investment they have, and I've been to the place, they still have the smell, you can smell it ten miles away.
Oh, yeah, they only pick complaints about that, yeah.
Their complaints constantly, they're having them right now, Metro Vancouver's having to redo their license, and they obviously wanna keep this place going, because it's really important to be able to do this, you know, and generate compost, but it smells, because stuff decomposes, you know, if you've done it in your backyard, if you don't do it right, it starts to smell, uh, because, you know, glass, brasker beans get all squashed together, no oxygen, and then it's, it becomes anaerobic, and, and it's, you know, all kinds of problems. So, composting is a difficult business.
But this has got nothing to do with compost.
No, it's just, it's just chipping the stuff all up, and then taking it to Harvest Power, probably.
You know, he shouldn't be chipping there.
Well, there's a difference between a...
But I don't understand that that's what he wants to do, he wants, he wants to be able to chip.
Already got through it already once, and...
He wants to be able to chip there, he wants to be able to compost there.
I don't think, I think he wants to be able to chip on-site, and then, take it, and then, once he fills a bin...
Take it off.
Take it off, and he can, and he can make money for that, because he can charge the...
If it stays too long, and he wants it to be okay...
But who's he, who's he gonna, who's he gonna charge money to?
The person that he's chipping it for.
So, he's gonna have a deposit fee at this transfer station?
Well, they're gonna pay him upfront, and then he'll, he'll transfer what he feels like.
Yeah.
Or he'll just start composting.
Or he'll just start composting.
Start composting, yeah.
So, if you have a truck loader, stuff full of, stuff, green waste, take it up there, and he charges twenty-five bucks for a truck loader?
But I guess a small load, he's not gonna be able to fill a bin.
Like, I, I agree with Drew, this thing's so open-ended.
It is, yeah, that is...
It would be nice to see a comprehensive plan, see, see, uh, the property boundaries redrawn to get proper zoning over the portion of land that's being used for uses that are currently not lawful. And, and see a comprehensive plan of, well, is it what we're gonna do here, is it what we're gonna do here, and some kind of sense of, you know, the, yeah, okay, this, this is, this is a, this is a plan that makes sense, it has an obvious future, where it's going.
The, yeah, the, the one part that he wants to do this on, it's just the part that's own, commercial-industrial, industrial-commercial, right? You're not gonna, you're not gonna get a plan for the rest of his operation, A, because it's a mining lease, and he doesn't have to do that, you can do whatever he wants in there. So, he carved out this one piece and made it commercial-industrial, so he can...
He can do whatever he wants, because it's a mining lease.
Well, it's...
He applies to do things to a different jurisdiction, it's not gonna do with the Muni.
I don't think we have a jurisdiction on that, it's ground.
Is that, is that a gravel pit operation?
Yes, yeah.
But is that actually where the gravel pit is, or finally?
Sort of.
Where it is?
He's never been up there?
I don't know, um...
I didn't notice any property lines.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No.
Yeah.
If you go to page thirty-two or forty-five, in his request, he doesn't mention anything about green waste, it's all wood, and wood chipping, and sales.
So, it's the city, the Muni, that wants the green, the compost thing, right?
But he doesn't.
No.
City, I, I would imagine the municipality, what their focus is, is they want somewhere, instead of people dumping all their stuff all over the side of the road, they want somewhere where they can put it, and then he'll collect it all for them, because he's such a great guy, he'll collect it all, and he'll take it out of the transfer station, or a plan.
Yeah.
But I, I don't know how the money, what the deal is, commercial operation, I, I, I don't understand how the whole thing works.
But his, his request to add the transfer station, it only includes trees at the moment, he wants to collect them, chip them, and then ship everything up. Either, either as stumps, or as, uh, chippings, it doesn't say anything about green waste or composting.
So, I mean, green waste, yeah, it's food waste, but it's also tree debris, so, he wants green waste, which is, like, but as a, like, lark, you know, not like kitchen waste, but as a, like, they clear a site, and, you know, the branches.
Yeah, I don't think, though, this is gonna help the situation of people, of landscapers and stuff dumping green stuff around the island, because he, he would, he wouldn't take that.
So, he would take, I mean, what we get, I mean, in terms of the amounts we get complaints, or is it like, somebody cutting a lawn, but it's like, somebody's cut down six trees, and if, we get all the bit, you know, and then dumped a truckload on somebody's...
Yeah.
In somebody's property, somebody has a big property, and they're just like, yeah, you can come dump it, and that's what we get complaints about. So, it's not like a personal landscaper amount of debris, but it's like a truckload or two trucks, and so that would help. Like that, at least.
So, basically, people who have done some land clearing would be able to take the stuff up there, and he charged them something, and to dump it on his, at his place, until he's got enough to take it away.
Can, can they get approval in principle from Metro Vancouver for the life transfer station license before the rezoning?
So, they, like, he's had this application in with them for a number of years, and essentially, they seem, no, because it's not, they refer to us and say, well, it's not zoning. Oh, right. So, one of their, their steps is like, is there appropriate zoning to have one? But do they have, like, a... Yeah, could it somehow, like, could his zoning permission be linked to his Metro Vancouver license? We know that, if we allow him to do something, that Metro Vancouver has more regulation on it.
Right, that's close.
Yeah, yeah, and that's a good point for follow-up, like, how exactly they would regulate it.
Right.
Do, yeah, does the Muni have further bylaws?
We have, what's like...